Westport's annual town meeting is May 7th. It will begin at 7:00 PM here at the Westport Middle High School. I'm Stephen Forrester, Westport's town meeting moderator, and I have with me Jim Hartnett, the town administrator. And our mission here today is just to do a quick review of the warrant. We're not going to advocate for any of the things on the warrant, not to tell you how you should vote, but just introduce those of you who are interested to what's going to be presented to you on the warrant and what you will be deciding on if you come to town meeting. So, Jim, you want to start with Article 1 is going to be removed, so we'll begin with Article 2 of the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, so Article 2, in the first few articles are pretty standard at every town meeting. Article 2 is, we transfer, within the departments for this fiscal year, current fiscal year, fiscal year '24, departments will be transferring some money from Personnel Services into their expense accounts and vice versa. This is just to get us through the remainder of the year. The Police Department will be transferring fifteen thousand from Employee Benefits to Police Services. They had three retirements this year, so they really did a number on their salary account. And there's some other smaller transfers, Town Clerks for twenty-seven hundred dollars, which is mainly because of the elections and also some of the beach passes. Transfer Station to cover some of their additional expenses, they've been buying some equipment. Beach Enterprise Personnel Services, last year we had to upgrade the lifeguard salaries just to get some lifeguards in, which was difficult, and we were able to get them in at the last minute, so that'll cover that. Highway Department expenses, we've had some emergency repairs that need to be done, so they'll be transferring some money from salaries into the expense account. The next one, the opioid settlement account, we've been receiving some money as a settlement from the opioid class action suit from a lot of the pharmaceutical or pharmacy companies. And this money went into free cash, and we need to put it into a special opioid settlement account. So we're just moving the money into that account right now, we're not expending those funds, but they will be available for expenditure either this year or next year. And then Employee Benefits to Legal Services, we're transferring twenty-five thousand dollars. We're hoping we don't need that, twenty-five thousand, but, you know, right now things are getting tight, so.
And I want to emphasize for people viewing that none of this involves any new appropriation or new spending.
That's correct.
It's just taking things from one bookkeeping box and moving it into another bookkeeping box.
Yeah, it's difficult on the town side because we appropriate expenditures for departments. The school does it for the entire department.
Right.
So they can move things around a little easier than we can.
Right.
We just don't have that luxury.
Right. All right, and Article 3 is just the salaries for elected officials.
Yeah, we have to identify the elected officials and approve their salaries on a yearly basis.
Yep. And Article 4 is the town budget. That is posted on the website, I believe, town website, for people who have little else to do and want to peruse the town budget in detail.
You know, that's a good question. It is on the website, I verify to make sure that the latest from the Finance Committee is up there, I believe it is, but we will double check that.
And then Article 5 is capital expenditure, so that's where we're going to consider buying some fairly big-ticket items for the town, right?
Yeah, so each year we have a Capital Improvement Planning Committee that meets, she's probably, oh, eight to ten times, eight to twelve times, to review different requests from departments. We use a portion of our free cash allocation each year to offset some of the capital expenses. So this year we're looking for some information technology of sixty-five thousand dollars. We have an old firewall, it's outdated, that really needs to be updated. We normally buy a couple of police cruisers out of this fund. And the Fire Department will be getting a forest rue brush truck, which is much needed. Highway Department, a pickup truck and a trailer. The Westport Elementary School and Macumber School, they have a number of updates to their bathroom facilities, that's a larger expense, but it's very much needed. And there's also a maintenance truck that went out towards the end of, well, the end of last calendar year, I think October, November. So those will cover the capital expenses, which are total about a million dollars.
Mm-hmm. Thanks. And then Article 6 is just a routine thing that is on the warrant every year. I don't think it's ever been discussed, or been less than unanimous, but...
It just authorizes the treasurer to borrow on a regular basis when they need to.
Yep. And then the next several there are for the enterprise funds and revolving funds. And could you kind of just explain to us how those things work? Because they're all basically similar, right? In that they take in money, they expend money for the same purpose. We don't really give them, we don't really appropriate money to them.
We don't. So the enterprise funds, for the most part, are self-supporting.
Right.
And they do give some funds back to the general fund over a certain amount, but we still have to appropriate from each one of those enterprise funds into their salary, expenses, and capital outlay items. So we have enterprise funds for the Marine Services, which is Harbor Master and Shellfish pays for some of their salaries, as well as their expenses, boating equipment and so forth. So that'll be, one hundred and eighty-three thousand will come out of the Marine Services Enterprise Fund. Then we have the Waterline Enterprise Fund, which is the Route 6 in Davis Road waterline. So the fees that we generate through the uses of the waterline offset the costs.
Right.
So the expenses that you have here are our fees that we pay to Fall River for the most part, and a small stipend for personnel to cover some of the expenses and billing. And we have the Town Beach Enterprise Fund, so all your beach pass money that comes into the town goes into this enterprise fund, and this offsets the cost for the lifeguards, as well as any expenses they have on the beach. And we have the Cable Television Special Account, which is, we're utilizing that right now, but that, those funds come into the town through Charter or Spectrum, and they're used for community television salaries to help offset some of the school salaries here as it comes to cable, as well as their expenses. And then we have the revolving funds, which are slightly different, but, you know, they function almost in the same manner.
Right.
So the revolving funds, and we have a number of them, and a lot of them, you know, deal with council on aging, social daycare programs, outreach, transportation. So the money they collect for those services goes into a specific fund, and then they can pay the expenses out of that fund. So it doesn't go through the general fund as a lot of the other fees and services do, it goes into those funds and directly out. And then what happens is we have a set amount for each one, so if the fees exceed those amounts, then it would go into the general fund.
Right.
So the ambulance fund, right now we have a hundred and ninety thousand, which they can use to offset their expenses.
Correct.
But we will collect an additional four hundred some thousand dollars that goes into the general fund from the ambulance services.
I think it's important for people to understand that these are, that these are not costing the town money, they're basically just ambulance services, they charge for ambulance services, they take in the money, they pay for ambulance expenses.
Yep.
It goes in their circle, and if there winds up being more income than there is outflow, well, then that comes back to the general fund.
That's correct.
Because sometimes if you look at these articles, it looks like the town is spending a whole lot of money on these things, but that's not really the case. That money's just circulating within that revolving fund.
Yep. And it's specific, the money that they collect has to go for those specific...
Right, for those same things. Then we'll skip over Article 13 because we will have CPC coming in to talk about that one. And then we will also have Infrastructure Committee person talking to us about the sewer Articles 14 through 16, so that would bring us up to 17.
Yeah, so Article 17 is a article being requested by the town treasurer, Susan Brayton. We get a lot of small bills, like for personal property, that, you know, they could be eight dollars, ten dollars.
Yeah.
And the way it's set up now, you have to send out an estimate, and then the final bill later.
Yeah.
If these bills are under a hundred dollars, they'll be able to wait and just send out one bill, which will benefit the people getting it, as well as the town treasurer's office.
Good. Article 18.
So we have a number of trust funds here in town, mostly small funds, and we can invest it a certain way. We're restricted by state law as to how we can invest those funds. This gives us a second option through the prudent investment rule. And what that rule is exactly, I'm not sure, but it gives the treasurer a couple of additional options for investment. It's still very restrictive, all those trust funds are limited as to how those can be invested, but it does give some extra opportunity.
And then Article 19 is to rescind an authorization to borrow two hundred and eleven thousand dollars from a couple years ago town meeting.
Yeah, so this goes back a few years, the town authorized borrowing of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars that was going to be used, I think temporarily, so that we could purchase a CR restriction on a piece of property. Once that was purchased, we were reimbursed from the state, so the borrowing is no longer needed. This is just a way to clear that off the books.
Yep.
It's kind of like an equity line, you know, you have an equity line, you haven't used it.
Right.
But it's still on your, it's still on your credit, so you want to remove it when you're not using it.
Want to remove it, good. All right, and then Article 20, that's on the warrant every year too. Can you tell us about that one?
Yeah, so this will be twenty thousand, usually it's forty thousand, this year it's going to be a smaller reval year, so this is, they will go through and reevaluate a certain number of properties, but they've done quite a few over the last few years, so this will be, the number they're planning on doing will be less this year, and that's required by the state.
Right. And that's to fund the assessors reassessing a portion of the property in town, which that kind of cycle, they, every year they do, they do some, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Yep. Twenty-two, we're going to delete, proposing to delete some words from an article passed three years ago?
So this goes through the Board of Health, so they put a restriction, each year or every couple of years, we get a pool of money from the state that allows us to repair septic systems, loan residents' money to repair septic systems. This was one of those pools, and they put a restriction on it that it could only be used for denitrification systems. What they found is some of these repairs that are being done do not require denitrification systems, so by removing this wording, they'll be able to let those people borrow at the low interest rate as well.
Right. Okay. And then it looks like Article 23, want to purchase, again, capital equipment but coming from another account, right?
Yeah, some of the fees that are charged at the transfer station goes into the Receipts Reserve Account at the transfer station, and by taking the twenty-nine thousand dollars out of that, they can purchase a couple of roll-off containers and replace some of the beat-up equipment that's out there now.
Article 24, seeing if the town will rescind the transfer of ninety-three million dollars to capable stabilization approved to last year's town meeting.
Yeah, so this goes way back, or it goes back, I think, two thousand and eleven, when the middle, the old middle school had PCB contamination, and the town borrowed, geez, I want to say a couple of million or two and a half million dollars to mediate the contamination in the school, and this ninety-three thousand was left over.
I thought I saw a comma there where there was not, it was ninety-three thousand dollars. I think I said ninety-three million. For those of you who gasped out there.
So the ninety-three thousand, last year we moved that money into the capital stabilization account, thinking that would be able to use it for capital projects. When the state saw that, they said, well, yes, you can use it for capital projects, but it's got to be specific to school buildings because that's what it was borrowed for.
Ah, okay.
So we're going to take it out of the capitalization fund, and then further down here, the next article, we put it in a warrant article so the schools can spend it on our building project.
Okay.
So 24 takes it out of the capitalization stabilization fund, Article 25 puts it into a warrant article so the school can spend it on building projects.
And these are basically things, so that this money was appropriated, it was unspent, but in the bookkeeping box that it's in now, it can't be used, so they're going to move it to another bookkeeping box where it can be used.
That's correct.
All right.
And then Article 26 is essentially the same, right? We're taking nine thousand dollars, that was appropriated for the mold remediation at the old police station. And we, last year we put it in the stabilization account, this year we're taking it out so that we can use it for town building projects.
Okay. And then Article 27. So it looks like, again...
Yeah, so we, the school had forty-one thousand, just over forty-one thousand dollars in an old warrant article that the town had voted for to do some work in the gym, the work was done, this was leftover funds, so they want to reappropriate that money to allow them to finish paving up around the Westport Elementary School. They did most of it last year, and this would allow them to finish it up.
Right, so, because if we, if town meeting appropriates funds for a particular purpose, if there's money left over when that purpose is served, we can't just take it and spend it somewhere else, it has to, it requires another vote at town meeting to apply it to a different purpose, and that's what this one is doing.
Exactly.
Yeah. Article 28.
Article 28 is, Beach Committee has requested that we transfer fifteen thousand from their account into an expense or a warrant article that would allow them to purchase a piece of property up on Cherry and Webb Beach, pretty close if not where the people sit, a small, it's only a small lot, there's a couple of small lots up there. This would cover the legal fees as well as the cost to purchase that property. Still need to be appraised, and we'd have to go through that process, but this gets them started.
And Article 29.
Article 29 is, again, this money would come from the Beach Enterprise Fund, they're looking for money to replace the existing fence, as you walk down the beach on that path, you'll see the fence to the side, it's in pretty poor condition, as well as buy a vehicle for them to access the beach, they're looking at a couple of options with the vehicles.
So this would be money that has already come into the town through beach passes and so on, right? Is in their enterprise fund, like we were talking about earlier.
That's correct.
But they've, but they've collected more than they've had to pay in salaries and expenses, so they want to apply that to beach-related expenses and build some fencing.
Exactly.
Article 30.
And this is similar from the Municipal Waterways Fund, which is an enterprise fund, which the Harbor Master uses. He's looking for thirty thousand dollars to purchase equipment, mainly outboard motors for two of his boats.
And then Article 31, we're moving, so, just as background, all land in town that's owned by the town is not, is not owned by the town broadly, it's owned by, the school, school department owns land, right? Or has care and custody of land.
Care and custody.
Right, I should use care and custody rather than ownership. And the Board of Selectmen has care and custody of some land, and so that leads into this one.
So this is, these are two parcels that are behind St. Vincent's property, the Land Trust property, and they're landlocked, there's a stream that runs through them. The Land Trust, as well as the Conservation Commission, want the town to, I guess, reassign them or put them in another category, which they call Article 97 land, which gives it additional protection. And it gives incentive for the Land Trust to create trails and stuff on that because they know it'll be protected in perpetuity, so we take it out of the authority of the Board of Selectmen, and we kind of put it under the authority of the Conservation Commission, and we put a restriction on our own property so that it's used for recreation and open space.
Right, so we're not buying or selling property, we're just moving the care and custody from one entity to another. Yep. Thirty-two, Municipal Light Board.
Yeah, so this has been on the town meeting warrant the last two years, it required two votes from town meeting to get it to this point.
Two ballot votes, two votes.
Oh, that's correct.
For those who recall, all filing out of the auditorium, getting a ballot, and filing back in again to complete these votes.
So this is the next step in that process, I mean, there's still ways to go, it kind of creates the board that would oversee this. There's a number of steps that are going to be involved in making this a reality, but this is just the next step. Creates the board that would oversee this community light plant, municipal light plant. It's kind of deceiving, the town is looking to use it for fiber optics as opposed to electrical.
Right.
Some of the other things that other towns have done, but it's the only process that we have.
Well, right, by state law, it has to be a municipal light board, right? Even though it's not going to be lighting, it's going to be fiber optic capable. So, and then we get into the zoning bylaws, which we're going to save for a representative of the planning board to share expertise on those. And this is so often with zoning bylaws, I'm flipping through pages, you're turning pages.
Thirty-four, I think is the next one. Article thirty-eight, thirty...
Yeah, I'm up to thirty.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-seven is still zoning. All right, thirty-nine, which is the Personnel Bylaws.
And this is a standard article that we see each year, just kind of updates the Personnel Bylaws to mirror what's been done throughout the town throughout the year, what the Personnel Board has looked at and what they voted on. So we have two positions in there for the beach that we realized we needed last year, a beach manager and assistant head lifeguard. I think at this point, they're not going to fill a beach manager position, but the assistant head lifeguard they are looking for. Both positions would be in the Personnel Bylaw if they want to be used, doesn't mean they have to be used, they would have to be funded through the salary account, but any changes we make to personnel has to be updated in the bylaw.
Right, right, so we could not hire someone for one of these positions if we did not have that position defined in the Personnel Bylaws.
That's correct. And then we had the Recreation Director, which the hours would increase by two hours per week, and not as manly at some point. If the Select Board chooses, they will oversee the beach, Cherry and Webb Beach operations along with the Beach Committee. And then an IT position, for part-time IT position of Town Hall, and then the other one was the Town Engineer, which is in the budget this year, or proposed for the FY-25 budget, which is something that would help out quite a bit if we could get an engineer here in town. We have a number of projects out in the works, and it's definitely needed.
Article forty, long text, but not a real complicated concept, is it?
It's not. So this is, this was submitted as a petition article, and authorized or approved by the Select Board to go on the warrant. So this is 634 American Legion Highway, is a convenience store gas station, and they would like to add a all-alcohol liquor license to it. Each community based on population has a limit to the number of licenses they can issue, so they're looking for special legislation to add an additional license to what's already been allocated to the town of Westport.
Yeah, so, so given our population, we get X number of liquor licenses in town, but if we want to give somebody one in addition to that, we actually have to petition the legislature to pass a special act.
Yeah.
To allow us to grant another liquor license, so that's what this is, is, I believe, authorizing the Board of Selectmen, who'll be the ones who would do the petitioning, to, but the town meeting has to grant them that permission.
That's correct.
Then they petition the state legislature, who pretty routinely pass these things, or?
Yeah, I think for the most part, quite a few communities do this.
Yeah.
You know, for various reasons, you know, there's some good and bad with everything, but we'll see what happens. Yeah, so this is a piece of land that butts the transfer station to the north, and it was actually split by Route 88 when it went in. So there's a small triangular piece behind the, behind the police station, which is landlocked, and then a piece that butts the landfill to the north on the other side of Route 88. And the owners, F.L. Tripp and Sons, have requested or asked to donate the property to the town of Westport, so we need to, in order for the town to accept the parcel, it has to be authorized and approved at town meeting.
Right, right, town meeting has to approve all acceptance and sale of real estate. So, and then we get to street acceptance, Article forty-two.
Yeah, so this was a subdivision that was approved years ago, and the street was constructed. It's a article that was submitted by petition, they're requesting that the town accept it and make it a public way, so this is something that we haven't seen in the last couple of years, but fairly common in previous years.
Now, have the, have the selectmen reviewed, because in order for the town to accept it as a street, generally, we want to be sure that it meets all the requirements of the planning board, of, I believe the Conservation Commission has a say in it as well, right? So has the Board of Selectmen reviewed all that, and will they be in a position to come to town meeting and confirm, yes, this meets all specifications?
I'd have to confirm with the Board of Selectmen, but it has been reviewed by the planning board, the construction of the road meets all the specifications. There was a question, this is off White Oak Run, which we don't have records of being accepted. And then there's, so White Oak Run is here, and then we have Rita Lane, which has been accepted, and this is an extension of Rita Lane beyond that. So we have a road that has not been officially accepted, and we have an accepted road off of it, and then this one, so that is a question, so I don't know if the Select Board has, I don't believe they have recommended one way or the other on this.
If I can put in a plug, these are very difficult for town meeting to get to the bottom of, when town meeting, for town meeting to dig out the facts on these things is difficult. So it would be helpful for us to have the Selectmen's, you know, opinion and confirmation that things are as they should be. But yeah, it's an awkward situation, because White Oak Run is the border between Westport and Dartmouth, and there's kind of some confusion as to whose road it is, or?
Yeah, we have a few of those roads, right? Where half of it's in Dartmouth, half is in Westport, so Horse Neck Road, Division Road, a few of them are split half and half, but there are also a lot of roads throughout these old communities that never have been officially accepted. They've just always been used for the, by the public, open, and there's, you know, we did check with town council, and they believe that if it's been used and open to the public for so many years, then it's almost considered accepted.
Yeah.
We'd still like to go through the formal process, get a road layout, so that we know what the boundaries are and get it done right, but, yeah, we'll work on that, and we'll try to get that resolved before that comes up.
So then we still have Article forty-three, looking at establishing a Special Education Reserve Fund.
Yeah, so this is a relatively new idea, it's kind of like a stabilization fund, it allows the town to put money into a special fund, and that fund can be allocated throughout the year without town meeting approval with a affirmative vote of the Selectmen and the school committee. And the intent of it is that if you get students mid-year, right, that you hadn't planned for, that have special needs or need to be transported outside a district, and those costs were not included in your yearly budget, this would be something that they could apply for to the school committee and the Select Board, and if they both voted affirmatively, they would be allowed to access this money.
Yeah, and I'm not sure everybody watching realizes that, that the schools are required by law to provide an optimal education experience to everyone regardless of special needs, and so if there are special needs, they have to provide that education no matter what it costs.
That's right.
And so because those can be unanticipated, I think, am I correct that the idea of this is to have a pool of money so you don't get caught all of a sudden unable to do that, and they have to have a special town meeting to move funds, or something like that?
So a lot of communities are starting to do this, and we're just starting at this point, right? So the next article, we would actually appropriate, put money into that fund. And that is, we had appropriated money last year to the school department, to the CIPC article, for them to put master paging systems and time clocks in the elementary school. They were able to do it wirelessly, which saved them quite a bit of money, so they have an additional fifty-six, almost fifty-six thousand dollars remaining, which they would put into the special fund, as kind of like seed money to get it started.
Yep, yep, good. And then the last article, oh, second to last, is to put some money in the Capital Stabilization Fund?
Yeah, so they proposed putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the Capital Stabilization Fund, which is kind of like a savings account that we can use in future years for large capital projects. And if, the thought is if we can build it up and then use the money, instead of borrowing for the money, you know, we will save on that end. It also helps with our bonding rating and a number of other things, that they see the community putting some money away for unexpected costs, it's helpful.
Yep. And then forty-six, to the stabilization fund, similar kind of thing, but not confined to a particular purpose, right?
Yeah, exactly, it can be used for just about anything, so.
But again, a savings account that helps us with, with bond interest and so on.
It does, and, you know, they like us to keep roughly five percent of our annual budget, three to five percent of our annual budget into a stabilization account, between the two, we've been creeping up a little bit, so we're getting closer.
What, maybe I get what percent we are...
I don't, I don't know.
I withdraw the question.
I should know, as soon as I said percentage, I said I'm going to get asked this question.
Yeah, yeah. All right, well, great, that covers all the articles sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and kind of related things, so Jim, thank you so very, very much for coming in.
Thank you, this is great. And I look forward to town meeting.
Yeah, see you, see you in a couple of weeks at town meeting.
Yes.
Our next guest, who's going to help us understand the articles sponsored by the planning board, which are zoning bylaw changes, is Jim Whiten from the planning board, and he will also be joined by our town planner, Michael Burris, who's going to take over my seat here.
We're doing several zoning articles this year, and two of which we're going to not bring forward, hopefully. So the zoning articles go in the category as fixes to our existing code, and then one zoning change. And the fixes are short-term rentals, currently they're not permitted, but we should permit them because people are doing it. Congregate living, we need a definition for our current bylaw. Congregate living, we need a definition for our current bylaw. And lot widths, we're trying to regulate lot shapes a little bit better than is, is possible today. Well. I don't know how to do that.
There are also some zoning changes too. Do you want to mention?
Right. So, um, which zoning changes?
Well, are they?
So we have.
I guess just in the bulleted list, if you wanted to mention the, um, unrestricted to residential agriculture.
Right, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, the zoning change is to change our unrestricted district, which is, uh, north of Route six and east of Davis Road. And butts up against the highway in the north and the properties on Long Route six on the south. Currently, that is an unrestricted zone, uh, which is a holdover from, I think, the original zoning that we did in Westport in nineteen fifty-something or rather. And, uh, the reason that we would like to change that is the unrestricted zone, uh, could have industrial uses. Could have a scrapyard, could have any of these things. And, um, it is currently really agricultural and residential and we don't want the, them to, to keep the conflicts. So. Then, uh, next would be Article thirty-three, short-term rentals. These uses are not allowed in our table of use. And if anybody knows Airbnb and such, uh, we have a lot of rentals that go this way. What we want to do is to, we've had town council tell us that they are not allowed because they're not in our table of use in the zoning bylaw. This would allow the use in the residential agricultural business in unrestricted districts. The residential and agricultural must have a seven-day stay unless otherwise waived by special permit. It establishes an annual registration requirement with the Building Department. And has limited standards such as requiring a local contact, contact, no commercial events. It must be registered with the DOI, D O R, Department of Revenue and so on. It's a pretty straightforward article. We need to, to pass it to make our short-term rental, uh, people legal. Article thirty-five is congregate living and, uh, it is, uh, to fix a problem that we have in the assisted and independent zoning bylaw. That requires independent living facilities to incorporate congregate living arrangements. However, the zoning bylaw does not define what congregate living is. In this definition, uh, if it is approved, we'll do that. And the definition is a shared living environment that combines housing and supportive services where residents share one or more common facilities. Including but not limited to kitchens, dining areas, bathrooms, and recreational, cultural, personal care, or social service facilities. Examples of supportive services include but are not limited to transportation, healthcare provisions, laundry, and meal services. Residents must have their own bedroom. And that's pretty simple.
One thing I'd like to add for this slide, Jim, is that the assisted and independent living zoning bylaw is an age-restricted form of housing. And so for an independent living facility, which is what this, um, definition is for, for the congregate living arrangements, independent living facilities are fifty-five plus.
Correct, correct. And it, it gives us, uh, this bylaw was created about nineteen years ago. And we've had one, um, development that used this, uh, bylaw and it's successful. It is, uh, older people living in, uh, close, uh, together with some duplexes and some single-family, uh, houses, uh, on smaller lots than average. But it is something that we need to address for our aging population in Westport. So I think it's a, it's a win. Article thirty-six, zoning map, map amendment. We want to replace the unrestricted district, which I mentioned earlier, with the residential agricultural district, which is the predominant zone in Westport. That's, most of Westport is that if it isn't commercial. And the reason that we want to do that is the unrestricted zone allows a lot of different uses, which are not compatible with residential areas. And I think it's time to, to get rid of that. I think it was a leftover anomaly from the first iteration of zoning in Westport.
What this does to the town zoning is it, it's a map amendment and it's also going to remove all of the references to the unrestricted district in the zoning bylaw.
And, uh, I can't show you the map, but it is an area, as I said before, north of Route six, uh, east of Davis Road and south of one ninety-five. Lot width, Article thirty-eight. This is to encourage more regular-shaped lot front, configurations with frontage near the roadway. The Planning Board proposes the following, the minimum front yard width as measured between the side lot lines shall be one hundred feet instead of fifty feet. The minimum front yard width shall be maintained to, frontage to a depth of two hundred feet. And it be determined that the measuring of the diameter of the largest circle that can be located along the continuous, but not necessarily straight line from the lot frontage. Without the circumference intersecting the side lot lines. Essentially, there will be a hundred by two hundred square or rectangular lot area at the front of the new lots. And with the two, uh, major, uh, zoning articles, Article thirty-four, the mixed-use science and technology overlay district, or MUSTOD. And thirty, Article thirty-seven, the Westport Gateway District, WGB, the Planning Board has decided that the proposed articles for the Westport Gateway District. And the mixed-use science and technology overlay district are not ready to be considered at town meeting. Accordingly, the Board would like to make a motion that, to refer these articles back to the Planning Board for further study. I think that's it.
That's it.
Our next guest is Betty Slade, the Chairperson of the Community Preservation Committee. Um, and every year CPC has an article on the town meeting warrant to, um, to propose uses of their available funds. And so I'm going to turn it over to her to tell us what CPC is proposing for this year.
Okay, so this year, uh, as you all may know, there are three categories that CPA funds can be used for. Open space and recreation, community housing, and historical preservation. So this year we have one, uh, major, uh, recreation project. And that is to completely redo the bicentennial playground, uh, up on, near MacGumber School. And that's going to be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's being asked of the, the town. The project is actually eight hundred thousand, but, uh, we've had private funds come in and also last year, there was some funding that was left over from the Annex Playground, which has also been, uh, redone. So the total being asked for in that project is, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand. The second category is community housing or affordable housing. Uh, Westport has an affordable housing trust. And this year they're asking for three hundred thousand. They don't come in every year. Usually they come every other year. So there's three parts to that request of three hundred thousand. One is for the Housing Assistance Office. And that consists of a housing specialist, of legal and consulting fees, administrative expenses. So that's forty thousand. The second is, category is for land acquisition and development program. The CPC has been suggesting strongly that a project similar to no, no quote village would be really useful in Westport. And we've, um, we've been urging them to set aside funding so that if a project comes up, or, or at least if the, a land becomes available, which they're looking for, then they will have the funding available. So that's two hundred thousand. Uh, and then sixty thousand is for what they call CREHAB. And that's basically helping, uh, owners conserve affordable housing that's already been allocated and has a restriction on it. So it helps people, uh, to prevent damage to the buildings. So in each case, we enter into a grant agreement. In historic preservation, we have two projects. One is the, uh, is the Historic Cemetery Website. I hope that many of you know that there has been a website out there since about two thousand and eight, but it was privately, uh, established, privately built. And now it's become, um, very outdated and actually inoperable. So, um, we've asked the town if they would take over the website, develop a new one in which they could actually use, um, use it for information that they have to keep for the cemeteries. As well as providing all the information that's necessary for historic preservation, uh, for genealogists, et cetera. And that's just thirty thousand. The other, the last, uh, project is, uh, the Bell School. The Bell Schools come back again. As you all know, there's been a lot of inflation in the last few years and so the amount that they asked for last year wasn't sufficient. So they are, they are, um, raising, uh, private funds, but also are asking for a hundred and ten thousand more in addition to, uh, last year. And that'll cover handicapped ramps and things like that. It's required that ten percent of, uh, estimated fund revenues, uh, go into the three categories. And so you'll note, um, in the handout that we give each year, you'll note that we put in specifically things like, uh, historic preservation reserves. So this year we have to put in ninety thousand. We have forty thousand for administrative funds. We rarely use over ten thousand, but we keep that because sometimes legal fees come in. And then the rest of the estimated fund revenues that are available, we put into budgeted, uh, we call them budgeted reserves, a hundred and ten thousand. And that's in case during the year, uh, a project, uh, if we have a special tap eating, a project may come up. And so we have the complete funding of, from the estimated funds that we're going to get for the next fiscal year. So that's the plan.
That's great. Thank you very much. But I'm also wondering if you, if you could just tell us, because I'm not sure everybody watching knows where these funds come from. Because these are not coming out of the general fund. They're not.
No.
They, they, these expenditures are not competing with our budget or our school's budget or anything like that. This is a separate pot of money.
Yes, so we have nothing to do with the budget. Um, as such, we're completely separate. We're called the Community Preservation Act Funds. The funds are from two sources. One is two percent of the, of the tax bill. For your tax bill, if it's a hundred dollars, then two dollars will go to the CPA funds. The second is from the state. The state provides, in the beginning, they provided a hundred percent match. Now it varies between twenty and twenty-five percent. So those are the fundings it's, uh, and it has nothing to do with the budget as such.
Right, so these funds are there available. It's just a decision about how.
We also have. We also have reserves left over from previous projects. And if a project, um, doesn't use all the funding, and that happens quite often, that goes back into the CPA funds, which can be used in the next years. So we are not, we don't look like a municipal budget at all.
Yep. Good. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Our next guest is Bob Daley from the Infrastructure Oversight Committee, who is going to enlighten us about, um, Articles fourteen through sixteen, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. So can you tell us what we have there to decide at town meeting?
Yes. Um, Article fourteen is the appropriation bill. So it is a, uh, an article that, um, allows the, uh, Board of Selectmen to appropriate money, allows the town to appropriate money for the Board of Selectmen to spend to, on a sewer and water project in Route six. And, um, right now, the, uh, motion is for thirty-five million dollars, which would have, um, built all of the three sections of the sewer and water in Route six. From the Fall River Line to, um, to Dartmouth. The Infrastructure Oversight Committee plans to, um, ask the town meeting to amend the motion, to reduce it to eight million dollars. Which is the estimated cost for the first section alone. That would allow the critical first piece of connection to Fall River to happen. And to build it roughly to the Route eighty-eight area. So that's the primarily business and commercial section in the northwest corner of the town. And that would, there is already water in that section of the road that was done because of pollutions twenty-plus years ago. And now this would extend sewer through that area, which is the heart of the business district on Route six. It's also the technology and the science and technology overlay district. So the, really the commercial heart in northwest would now have water and sewer if this were to pass.
Mm-hmm. And, and just to clarify a couple of things from procedural point of view, that, that as the article is written, um, it, it quotes a number of thirty-five million dollars. But when I ask for a motion in that article, that motion will be for eight million dollars. And I'm sorry, did I say thirty-five thousand or did I say?
Thirty-five million.
Thirty-five million, right. And, and so there will be a motion for eight million. But, um, whatever the number, which is perfectly legitimate, even though the, the article says thirty-five. For town to vote a smaller or a slightly larger number is no procedural problem at all. But, but this would also be contingent upon a Prop two and a half, um, debt exclusion. So were we to appropriate those eight million dollars, that would, that appropriation would only be effective if there was yet another town election and the town passed that eight million dollar debt exclusion, correct?
That, that's, that's correct. And as, as everyone knows, the, the, uh, the, the debt exclusion, uh, vote, uh, passed, I mean failed. And what we would need to do is to schedule another vote, uh, this, sometime this summer. If it passes at town meeting, that is, the appropriation has been made, we still need the voters authorization to do a debt exclusion.
Right, right. Thank you. How about, uh, Article fifteen?
Article fifteen is the, uh, authorizes the Board of Selectmen sitting as the sewer and, uh, water commissioner, they already are the water commissioners, sitting as the sewer commissioners. To, uh, develop a betterment, uh, policy. And for the voters, what a betterment is, is a, when sewer and water facilities, in this case, betterments or the policy is only to have betterments applied to the sewer appropriation. That when, um, your, your property is increased in value when public water and sewer is available at your doorstep. So the, and that, that betterment is a, an assessment against the, the property. And it's a, it's a charge for the, the infrastructure that has been brought to your doorstep. Now, the policy that we've drafted is to have twenty percent of the cost be, um, done through betterments. And eighty percent done through the general tax. So that the people who actually receive. So that the people who actually receive the water and sewer pay something extra than the town at large that doesn't receive the service. Now, the betterments can be paid directly, or they, that is, you could write a check, or they can be assessed and paid with your tax bills over the life of the bond. So if we floated a bond for 20 years, you could pay that in your quarterly tax bill payment. The method that we've chosen, there's a generally accepted method, there are a couple of generally accepted methods. We've chosen the Uniform Unit Method. And what that means is that we look at what the amount of water a typical home would produce. And, you know, we would look at that as being the one unit, that what a typical house uses is one cost. And then we would look at the other uses. If you are a restaurant, for instance, you use more water, or an office building, a large office building that uses more water, then let's say you had a use that used three times as much water, then we would charge you three times as much as a house. And those are called EDUs, which are equivalent dwelling units. And what, the way we figure out what that equivalency would be is that we take the state Title V, which is the general method of producing sewage flows, and we look at what the uses are and what the uses would be in generating waste flow. So if you generate three times as much as a house, you'd be three EDUs. And that way, the betterments are charged proportional to the use of the sewer system. We have, right now, been trying to keep the, that 20-80 split, we've been trying to keep the betterments in the $10,000 or less range. And the reason we did that, we were looking at, we understand that the sewer and water are being produced into some of the lowest-income neighborhoods in the town. And while any additional tax or any additional cost is a burden, we've been trying to keep the burdens in something like $100 on your quarterly tax bill. So if you took $10,000, divided it by 20 years, it would be $500 a year, and quarterly tax bills would be around $125. So it's not nothing, but it's something that we hoped would be manageable. In the case of the first phase, the first section of sewer, if you look at the, just without accounting for the grants and funds that we have in hand, if we just borrowed the whole construction amount, the current estimate before we get the actual bids in is around $10,300. If you just apply the money that we already have, we have a $959,000 federal direct spending grant applied only for the sewer. If you took those off, it drops the first phase EDUs to about $9100. So it's that, it's that range we were trying to hit. And again, it's trying to make someone who paid it for 20 years fit in that range.
So would it be an accurate summary to say that this grants the Board of Selectmen, who are presently functioning as the sewer commissioners, the power to assess betterment charges to the people who are going to benefit, people or businesses that are going to benefit from the water and sewer, and that it places limitations on that, but also ceased to let the people could pay that off over a number of years?
That's correct. And the policy is, when the betterments are assessed, they are assessed when the sewer is actually at your doorstep. So they're not assessed at town meeting or something. They're assessed when the sewer is built, all the costs are in, all the grants and costs are applied. Then the net sort of borrowing cost is assessed. That's the 20% we're talking about. And the policy as it sits now doesn't require people to connect. That is, it doesn't mandate that people have to connect to the sewer. We're just bringing it to your doorstep. Once it's there and it's working, then the betterment charges are assessed.
Okay. And then Article sixteen?
Article sixteen is, there'll be a motion to have the Board of Selectmen actually sit as the sewer commissioners. Right now, they sit as the water commissioners. And we need people, obviously, to manage both the construction. There's a bunch of administrative functions that need to happen, and someone needs to be responsible for that. So the Board of Selectmen would amend our current agreement with the Town of Fall River. We have an agreement with Town for Water Services, and we would amend that to include the sewer services. This has already been discussed with the Town of Fall River, but the Board, this would empower the Board of Selectmen to do that. It also empowers the Board of Selectmen to create a sewer enterprise fund, so that managing the building for sewer services and the collection of monies and all of that, so that they would take on that role. And it's basically a ministerial role of administering the sewer enterprise fund. And our estimate of the first-year cost, if we built just the first section of sewer, if we, all of that passed, is that that enterprise fund in the first year needs to be in the $75,000 to $100,000. That's sort of the pure operating cost of that first. And that would be, that would be, the technical aspects of, you know, looking at the pumping stations, everything would be done on a contract basis.
All right, good. Well, that's the three water and sewer articles.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much. Appreciate you coming in.
You're welcome, Steve.
See you at town meeting.
And thank you for the opportunity to tell the people what this is all about.
Our next guest is Karen Rouse, the chairperson of the Westport Finance Committee, who she and her committee have been working long and hard to craft good, wise recommendations for us for all the town meeting articles. So she's going to speak generally to the town's financial situation and how we're going to pay for all this stuff that we talked about in the articles.
Well, thanks, Steve. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. I just want to first thank the Finance Committee for all the countless hours that we've done with all our meetings to work with everything. I wanted to start off a little bit and just explain to everyone what the fiscal '25 budget process has been for us. So we started the budget process in October and through January, and we had three joint meetings with the Select Board and the School Committee and the Finance Committee to really discuss all the fiscal issues at a high level, think about free cash, and think about all the important things for us. Then December through February, we met with each of the departments to go over their budgets in detail. And then in April, the Finance Committee made its recommendations for the budget that will be presented in the town warrant. So it's really a six-month process for us, so this is not something that just came up and just appeared. We've worked quite, quite long and hard on this. As we've expressed in previous years, the Town of Westport operates in a structural deficit. And a structural deficit means the expenses are really outpacing revenue. So our revenue is limited, and so therefore, our expenses then are also limited. And what that means is every department, the school district, all are not able to fund themselves fully at level services. And that's, that's the nature of what we're with now. We attempted an override, and we brought that to the voters last year. That did not pass. So that means the town still has its restricted limits on its revenue, and the town needs to do its best with the revenue that it has. And for that means expenses are limited. I can't show you some slides I have here.
Miscommunication.
So I will just move right along. I will move right along. One of the biggest impacts to the town's budget is the Proposition Two and a Half, where the property taxes are limited to 2.5% per year. So the inability for the town to successfully pass an override continues to be the biggest issue that the budget will face. In terms of overall expenses for the year, the general fund expenses overall are up 5% for the year, and you'll see that in the last page of the town warrant. I can't share that with you today, but you can go to the town warrant, and you can see that in the back. So what does it mean that we have a structural deficit and we need to make it work? We need to figure it out. And that means that the town budgets and the school district are not able to be funded to the levels that they need to be funded at in order to operate effectively. This budget also includes $500,000 of free cash to help the school district with its deficit.
But can I interrupt to ask you to just tell people what free cash is? Because that term is so misleading.
It is.
It ain't free.
It is not free.
It is cash, but it's not free.
Absolutely. On my next slide, yes, so free cash is a term that's, is a state term. And what it means is it's cash, we all, we create a budget in fiscal '24, and then at the end of the year, you may have, we may hopefully have surplus revenues. So we have generated more revenues than we budgeted for. So that's a surplus, which is a good thing. So we budget a little on the conservative side in hope that we'll generate revenues in excess of that. And on the flip side, we have expenses that we appropriate, and we don't always spend to the full dollar of what we expended. So we have what's called turnbacks that come back. So free cash is generated because we generate a surplus. We have either excess revenues, and then we have expenses that we don't generate. So we develop this surplus. That surplus becomes generally available. It's called free cash. So now you can use that in a free way. It's free and unrestricted. And generally speaking, we want to use that free cash for one-time expenditures and not for the operating budget. We can never anticipate each year how much free cash we'll get, so there's no guarantee we'll generate free cash. And when we do generate it, we have no idea really what the amount's going to be. So the town doesn't want to rely on it in its operating budget. Free cash is generally to be used for one-time expenses like capital items, and that is the source that we use for capital items. So that's free cash. Does that explain that okay?
That was very good. I was just going to interrupt you to say that when we reviewed the capital expenditures earlier, the police cruisers and all those things, those were all going to be funded by free cash.
That is correct. That is correct. So this budget, again, has $500,000 in free cash to support the school, the school district with its needs. That becomes problematic, because if next year comes and there isn't free cash, then how will next year take care of the school? So we've been working with the Select Board and the School Committee to work on a five-year plan, to really be looking ahead. And we've all come to the agreement that, you know, we need to no longer rely on free cash in the operating budget. And the plan was to reduce the amount of free cash by $100,000 each year, so at the end of five years, our budget will be self-sustaining.
So you mean the amount of free cash that is going into the operating budget?
That is going into the operating budget.
Operating budget, which is the annual budgeted expenditures.
Right, right. Yep, yes. So for this year, for all of the warrant articles, including the budget, so we have some free cash that we're using in other articles. We have Article Two is using $124,000 of free cash. Article Four, which is the budget, is using $634,418 of free cash. Article Five, which is the capital expenditures, is using $1 million. Article Twenty, which is for the assessors, is using $20,000. Article Forty-Five is a capital stabilization fund, and that's $250,000. And Article Forty-Six is for the regular stabilization fund for $100,000. So that's, that's the intent of how using the free cash this year. Where do we look for 2026? So looking at this budget, when we look ahead, we don't really see any major sources of new revenue. We see the structural deficit's going to continue, and we see that there's impacts to municipal services going forward as well.
If I can interrupt for just a second, when we refer to 2026, that's fiscal year 2026, which starts July 1st of, wait, 2026?
Correct, 2026.
So that's going to start July 1st of 2025.
Right. So fiscal, this budget is fiscal '25, which starts July 1, '24, to go through June 2026. Yeah, so looking even ahead, not this operating budget that we're talking about, looking ahead. So we're working with the Select Board, again, in the school, on a five-year operating budget and a five-year capital plan and a free cash policy, to really, to really see what we can do. But our options are pretty limited. And just as a wrap-up, if anybody is interested, our Finance Committee meetings are always on the Westport Government Channel. And if you'd like to email FinCom for anything, that's on the website, but the email address Send us an email, and we'll do our best to try to answer any questions.
And I want to say one more time what a great job the Finance Committee has done, what a great job Karen Rouse has done chairing the Finance Committee. And we could not do town, well, we could do town meeting without a Finance Committee, but it would be a horror that no one would want to witness. The Finance Committee makes it possible for us to go in there with good recommendations, good background information, so that we can make good decisions at town meeting. And that is so valuable, and we appreciate it so much.
Thank you very much. Thanks.